Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera?
Here.
Dr. Voat?
Here.
Dr. Sally?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here.
And I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspapers in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. And I'd like to first announce that we're now videotaping meetings and they'll be streamed live for the public to watch everything, so just wanted everyone to know that, and also in the council chambers. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Carmen DeFalcón to give his presentation on Shop Long Branch.
Good evening. I'd like to -- do I talk in the microphone?
Yes, please.
Okay. I'd like to pass this around, please. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you very much for inviting us to present tonight. My name is Carmine DeFalcón from FinCrediting. FinCrediting is the administrator of the Property Tax Reward Program. We started the program seven years ago, or six years ago, in Marlboro, New Jersey, and today we are in 24, soon to be 25 towns all over the state. The way the program works is a shop local initiative, so people spend their money in town instead of losing revenue to other towns. The way the program works is very simple. The township will issue this kind of cards, it's a swipe card, to all the residents in town, and when they shop local, our participating retailers, a percentage of the sale, whatever they want to give back when they register, goes back to the person's property tax bill. So the more I shop in my own town and I swipe my card, the more property tax credits I earn directly of my third quarter tax bill. So just as an example, let's say a restaurant participates with a 10% reward. I go out to dinner, it costs me $100, I will pay $100 at the point of sale, I give them my Shop Long Branch card. The Shop Long Branch card is processed online on a dedicated machine that we provide, and that creates a $10 which we then collect from the merchant and we deposit in a township dedicated account. We deposit 75% of that, 25% stays with us, so...
I'm sorry, is that -- can you tap that microphone? Is it on there?
No. I'll have to start over.
Do you have a clip?
I don't see any of that.
Oh, right here.
Give it a second.
Sorry about that. So, to follow the same example I said before, if $10 is the reward, we deposit $7.50 in a township dedicated account, and we keep $2.50 for program management fee and everything that we do. Fast forward to the third quarter tax quarter, and we send a payment file to the township with all the block and lots and all the credits, so the tax collector, the only thing they need to do is press a button and all the block and lots are then credited. So when the person gets its own bill for the third quarter, they're going to see the rewards that they've accrued between the period of May 1st to April 30th. So that's how the program works in a nutshell. What are the costs? The cards. The cards have a cost of $1 each, but in all of our cases, they are sponsored by a local merchant or by the local bank you do business with, but they're sponsored. And for that, they put their name in the back of the card. And this is a great marketing material for them because the cards do not expire. So, in your case, you may need about 10,000 to 15,000 cards. As far as the merchant is concerned, there's really no cost to them other than the reward that they're giving back and $10 a month participation fee. If they need a machine, they're going to have to buy the machine, which is $230 one-time cost. If they don't need a machine, they can just apply it online. In our experience, when you have a fast-paced business such as a restaurant or a pizzeria, you're better off getting the machine unless you are well-automated. But, so that's how it works in a nutshell. We will manage the program, and that's why I brought here Glenn K. Glenn is my colleague. He manages about 10 to 15 townships that we do, and he will be the manager of Shop Long Branch if you guys, you know, move forward with the program. But we need a person in town, a point person in town, a champion in town, that helps them because Glenn cannot be everywhere, and he needs to work with somebody. He will be supervising the town. And Glenn, you want to say a few words about that?
Sure. Again, my name is Glenn K. Thank you for having us out this evening to present Property Tax Card. In essence, I mean, who wouldn't want to spark and implement a program to foster local, shopping local, right? So that's, conceptually, that's the benefit of this. And there's effort involved up front, a great deal of effort up front whereby we need to get out in front of merchants. So obviously, the first challenge is getting sponsorships to cover the costs for printing cards. We don't want it to be on the backs of taxpayers, obviously. So the goal of that is typically we find a bank or another institution or large merchant in town that would be there to fund and offset the cost of the cards. A lot of times, towns will also cover the cost of maybe half of the terminals that have to go out to the first 15 merchants, just to spark and to motivate merchants to sign on and to enroll and engage in the program. Now, once we have our 15 merchants, you know, initially, we attacked by getting out in front of these merchants. Initially, you might want to have a meeting, you know, if all the other steps are done, when you get to the point where, okay, we're ready to have a program, let's take the next step and get out in front of these merchants. Merchants are the ones that actually fund the program, they make the program viable. It's their money that customers will spend at their, you know, at their business actually pays for the program. And they, in turn, get the benefit of reduced taxes. So initially, what I do is I'll go out and meet with somebody in town, a point person, go out and meet a lot of merchants, make the calls, get out, knock on doors, whatever we have to do. That's after, perhaps you may also want to have perhaps a Chamber of Commerce meeting or Economic Development meeting where we invite a lot of the merchants down here, we do a presentation for them, we have little forums, Carmen and I will have forums on the table. These merchants will fill out the forums and then we do our follow-ups. Once a program is implemented and we have our 15 merchants, boom, we're ready to go, we have a solid program. Cards get distributed to the homeowners either voluntarily or by mail, and then, of course, the constant ongoing and maintenance of the program whereby we really should have two hours, three hours a month roughly, or two, three hours a week, I should say, of somebody here in town that could designate and dedicate some time to get out and continuing to help the program grow, reaching out to new merchants, reaching out to me so maybe I could make calls, set up meetings for merchants. That's basically it. So there's a lot of effort involved, helps to have a point person in town ongoing to keep that program going and viable. So, thank you.
So, just to close the loop on this, we need that point person in town. That's important because now we have enough experience in it. We know what works and what does not work. Those towns that are doing the best, to be honest, are the ones that have people dedicated, dedicated, I'm talking about three hours a week, to the program. Those towns that don't do as well, I mean, they still make $5,000, $10,000 in property tax credits, but they have the potential to do a lot more, are the people that just put the program in the corner and don't do anything with it. You need long-term sustainability, and that's what I want to get to you and tell you tonight. So, the other thing is, the other commitment from the township is going to be ongoing marketing. By marketing, I mean a lot of social media, so nothing expensive, because now the merchant needs to know that you are close to them, that you are doing something for them. That's why they're participating in your program. Shop Long Branch is not a brand, it's a brand of your town, so that's what we will need to do. So, with that, I thank you, and if you have any questions, we'll answer them now.
Have you talked with our Chamber of Commerce at all?
No, we have not talked to them yet.
Okay.
That's the next step.
That will probably be the next step. As far as township is concerned, generally, you issue, you sign either a resolution or an ordinance, I believe. Lou, you're more into the ordinance thing?
Yes.
So it's probably going to be an ordinance or two readings, a few months to get that done, and then get the sponsor. Perhaps even before you do the ordinance, you want to get a sponsor so you make sure that you have a program. No sponsor, no program, basically, so...
Lou, what is involved in the ordinance or resolution? Because you basically initiated this in Marlboro with Carmen back when it started, right?
Correct. Yeah, we were the first program that he did. So, the structure of it is that you'll have an ordinance that authorizes these kind of programs, and then you'll have, I can share with your CFO, the kind of administrative guidelines that are, that cover the mechanism by how the program will report to him in whatever form he needs to make sure that there's a seamless, you know, accounting of all of the programs. So you'll adopt the ordinance that authorizes this, and then basically, it's an application form, which is all of the information, so you know who you're dealing with and how it is that it's going to operate. What they found in Marlboro, at least that I thought, that it became kind of the focal point for their economic development, it gave their Economic Development Committee, which is, Marlboro happens to be all volunteers, so there's a deputy mayor who was a volunteer but who was in charge of the economic development, Larry Rosen, and it gave them the opportunity to go out and literally talk to every merchant in town and to sell what became the kind of a branding for, you know, Shop Locally, Shop Marlboro. It really gave kind of everybody a sense of community, it gave them a sense of being all kind of in it together, and then, you know, the advantage of it is that all of you in town who shop locally and go to all your local businesses, you then got that little economic incentive to, as a credit against your taxes. So, it really, like I said, it really became almost a branding for the local community. It also, and I don't know whether you had, this was part of your experience too, when new businesses were thinking about locating in town, it's actually a pretty interesting program because it shows that the town is invested in the success of new businesses that come into town. So, you know, it's...
That is correct.
From what I know, and Mike knows the CFO, the business administrator in Marlboro pretty well, and he's pretty much a stickler, and it kind of worked seamlessly, got all of the kinks out of it, and it, you know, the program's been...
It's working well, it's working well.
Yeah, it's been positive, and it's also occurred in the number, you have Shop Brick now too, right?
Oh, yeah. We have Shop Brick, Buying Brick, that's what they call it, Buying Brick.
Sure.
We have, like I said, 25, 24 township. The mayor Newark has already announced, so Newark is going to be next, that's going to be a huge undertaking.
Right.
Because of its size.
Sure.
But, yeah, we have 24 townships, so they're still alive, and Newark is going to be our next town.
Carmine, can you also talk about if you're not a property owner, how it works if you're a renter, for example?
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing it up because I forgot to mention that. If you're a renter or you're a visitor, you can still participate. People work in town that don't necessarily live in town, they will register as a renter/visitor, and they get a check from us at the end of the year. So the idea is when people come to town, don't let them go back home, let them shop at night, let them go to your local restaurants, so at least they can get some incentive. And we just send out the checks, we had about, I don't know, 5,000 checks that we sent out to all the people that participated in our programs. So, again, it works okay for everybody, so that works.
Yeah, it's great, it's a great idea. Sponsorship amounts to about how much money?
Well, it depends on many, what is your population in town? I want to say 30,000?
31,000.
31,000. So you probably have about, I want to say, 10,000 households, give or take, maybe a little less than that. So you will need about 13,000, 14,000 cards, you want some inventory, then you're going to have families that want the second and third card for the children and their spouses, so you do need $13,000, $14,000, which you can, typically, the township will knock on the door of the bank where they keep their funds. I don't know who you do banking with, but some of the banks are really open to help you, because they have their name in the back of the card. In the case of Washington Township, they got Republic Bank, they're a very good friend of our program. Investors is also another big bank that does a lot of government banking, and if you would have that, you know, I know they're open to it, so...
Yeah. So we're basically looking to start at something in the range of about 14, 15...
Yeah, I would say yes.
And who's the person, I mean, position-wise or whatever, that you typically work with? Is it an employee that this becomes, and who is that?
First sponsors, you mean? First sponsors?
No.
No, 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 for ongoing...
For the point person.
Exactly. For the point person.
Oh, here in the town, okay.
So, we have had a lot of towns, I don't know what your situation is, but many towns have, like Lou was saying, an executive director, and many of them are only volunteers, like in the case of Marlboro. If you have an executive director, the EDC, of the Economic Development Committee, who is an employee, that will be the natural person to work with this. However, we work with many towns where they have the assistant to the manager, to the town manager, like a lady that maybe can spare two, three hours, or a guy that can spare two, three hours a week, that would be the right person for us. Anyone who's not afraid to talk to merchants, let's put it this way, they have to be outgoing, has that kind of personality.
And the other aspect of that as well is if there is a point person here in town, if they can't get out in front of merchants on a regular basis, perhaps that they can put together merchant lists, share them with me, I can then make the calls, set up meetings, and then we go out together like the following week or a couple weeks, whatever, and plan it accordingly.
I think we have a few could help out.
Oh, that's great. That is great.
It always helps to know that. Now, the other thing is, to hit critical mass, it would be best if you could, like in Washington Township's case, they mailed the cards to the homes. What they did is they printed the instructions on how to register cards on the back of their calendars, and it went out with their calendar. So they actually had it glued to the calendar, and the calendars went out to folks' homes in the back page, so they had like an immediate head.
You all go through it full of waste when you do that because people will throw away, but at the end of the day, you get a critical mass right away, going to have a couple of thousand families registering right away, which is good for the merchants.
So Carmine, what is the timeframe for, let's say, a municipality that wants to, you know, aggressively take forward with this typically, let's say, from presentation like we're doing this evening to...
To getting it done, to rolling it out. My experience has been, it's not going to take you less than six to nine months to get it done. It might be, you might think it's slow-moving, but the idea is government banking is, you know, government business is always very slow, and that's perhaps a flaw of our business model, because when we talk to township, then it takes about, I didn't figure that out when I started, but it takes a year to get it done. In the case of Marlboro, it took them two years. So, good thing I was in something else.
Fairness, you were the first, though.
But you were the first. You were, you need that, you need it, but you won't believe, still now, that it's already a well-oiled machine, I believe.
Sure.
You still have many, many months. The fastest time I've seen is about six months. So, if you want to start today and you get a sponsor and the merchants meeting and everything and everything else, and you're really aggressive, we may be ready for the Christmas season. Otherwise, it'll have to be the spring of next year, most likely, but it's all up to you guys, really.
And just to confirm, there's no cost to the city for any that's managing it or whatever?
There's no cost other than some marketing. I've seen townships that put a couple of thousand dollars behind it. I know the economic development has a budget, in the case of Marlboro, and they put some signs out, for instance, those signs are very nice, like they're three by five, the signs cost like $300 each, and the public works people, they just put a couple of sticks in the ground on township property, and they put those signs out, Shop Marlboro, and you might have seen it in Marlboro, you may have seen it in Manalapan, which is another town that we do. Those are very effective. Social media, you probably already have somebody, will help with the social media, will help with some of the things. We send out email blasts a couple of times a month, we do a part, as much as possible, because for us, it's a business opportunity, I'll be very clear, it's not. We do it for a reason, and so we'll help.
In addition, you can actually put up to four sponsors' names on the backs of each of the cards. So, if, it probably would help to get additional funding from a sponsor or a second sponsor or even a third sponsor if necessary, to cover the cost of not only printing the cards, you want to have, as Carmine mentioned, that extra, the delta, you know, extra leftover. It also helps to give each merchant that registers the program a little stack of cards, they can use that as their own rewards program for their own customers if they choose to do that. But it helps to cover the cost of mailing and maybe to cover the cost of maybe signage that you want to distribute throughout town and other things, so that, you know, there is no out-of-pocket for the township, and that's something.
It's more budget for economic development is really something that every town, in my opinion, should have, but that's a personal opinion. Because now, what I've seen in all of these towns, they're becoming more and more business-friendly because in the past, they could not count on the central government to give them money, and so now they have to find a way to help their merchants. Too many vacancies in town and too many... I have a town that once did the program really bad, and it tells me, Carmine, we are losing $20,000 per household to the next town over because we have vacancies, and that's a lot of money. That's a lot of money. If we can capture 2% or 3% with your program, they told me, would be a great, a great thing for us. P.S., they still have not done the program two years later, and that's unfortunate because I like to see that town succeed, but so those are the challenges, really.
So, I'm sorry, Joe. So had it, was you and I talked about this, just at Ocean Fest, as a matter of fact, I found out, I was given a flyer about the Pure Village Rewards Program, which just made me think, you know, the interaction with some of the rewards programs that already exist.
I would imagine the Pure Village, like many Main Street-type of programs, is simply a card, there's no technology behind it, there's no swiping, you just go over there, maybe they click the card, every time you go and miss it, you have three visits, you get something. It's a little bit different, this is a lot more involved, also because the merchants have the ability to go in the backend and capture the email addresses of everybody that shops there.
Oh.
That's a great asset. If you own a restaurant and you have, at the end of the year, you could have 200, 300 names that you did not have before, and email addresses. So it's a real value and a real tool to them, because they can do their own marketing, and they can see how many times they come to shop, what they've spent, and if they haven't come, they only came once, hey, maybe they didn't like my food, come back, we'd like to invite you back, to something special for them, one customer at a time.
Mike, I know you inquired with a few people in other communities, do you have any technical issues or anything with this for Carmine?
No, my inquiry settled some technical issues that I had in setup and things like that, like I talked to the guys in Marlboro, I talked to the guys in Old Ridge, Amontre Shaw, I spoke to him, he's a friend of mine. The setup is not really a large issue.
I mean, some of the great kind of merchants that do very, very well in the program, certainly restaurants are probably the number-one type of merchant. Markets, independent markets, getting big corporate, like a ShopRite or Stop &amp; Shop, Acme, those are challenging, but if you have a good local market in town, those kinds of merchants work very, very well. Fast food, your Dunkin' Donuts, coffee shops, things like that, nail salons, hair salons, dry cleaners, those are the kinds of merchants that tend to do very, very well in the program. Little less professional, you know, like doctors, dentists, things like that, not as much, but on the other side.
They can participate, but it's...
They are able to, yeah.
What about like service-oriented businesses, HVAC, plumbing?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
They work very, very well.
The home-based businesses, we call them, because many of them, they're just small guys with a truck going around, yes, they can definitely participate. They do a lot of promotions already, they spend a lot of money. Every time you go in mail pack on one of those money mailers, it's $400, $500 for two, three months, and plus you have to give them the coupon. What is it really costing your program now? Our program really is costing $10 a month, but then you have a lot of, you know, people backing it up, and so I think it works.
Some real stories of service business, we have a Somerville Aluminum, happens to be in the program over in Bridgewater, and there are people, each year, past couple years, people did $180,000...
Addition to their home, maybe.
Home addition, new roof, windows, so that homeowner didn't have to pay taxes for like two years, it's great, you know, so those are the, you know, so service businesses can't work quite well, pest control, you know, lawn service, things like that, yeah.
Any other questions? Why, just a one. It surprised me when you said that about the email, just because people are so protective. So are there any other, like, little details in the infrastructure here that would be interesting for us to know?
So, here's the thing, when people sign up with their card, they have to accept terms and conditions, okay? And we provide the term and condition, they're very open, we give it to your lawyer, if you guys want to add something to it, that's fine.
Okay.
It says very boldly over there, nice in bold letters, that if they sign up, their email address will be available to the people, only to the people where they go shop, only to merchants that go shopping. The reality is, it's no longer a privacy thing, because I can get your email probably tomorrow, but yes, we do tell them in advance, and they need to approve and to accept it. It's never been an issue all our years in business.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? Sounds like a great idea.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us.
Again, thanks for having us, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a consensus to see if you can present your similar report with Shop Long Branch.
I think it's ready. How much is the volume?
I would also...
Thank you, Jack. Thank you.
I can prepare the necessary ordinance and I'll work with my concern with the other insurance details and have to for your next meeting, you can consider it at that time and decide when you put it up.
Thank you. Next item is Rose de Vol project, and Mr. McNamara.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, I'm Patrick McNamara from the firm of Crenzy and Pollen Beck here in Red Bank. I'm here with Eric Blou, our project engineer. What we have is before you this evening, we have three right-of-way ordinances we need you to consider to follow through on this 12-lot, single-family home-approved major subdivision. The homes are large-scale luxury-style homes, and the architecture has already been locked in with the approval from the planning board, so that the houses will be uniquely designed, but will certainly complement the architecture of the area. Eric, if you could please describe why we need the right-of-way ordinance.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, so, yeah, so this is the second time that we're coming in front of you, so we got your approval to go in front of the planning board, to seek approval from the planning board, they've granted that approval, so now we're here to perfect the subdivision map that requires some right-of-way dedications and vacations. And just to give a little bit of a background as well, part of the vacations and dedications, the reason this was done, is that we're redoing the end of Seaview Avenue with decorative pavement, we're using this compass-type of design, so we're actually totally changing that end now, that's just a bunch of yellow stripes out there. We're also putting in some brick crosswalks as well at different intersections throughout the development. We're also getting rid of overhead wires that exist on Seventh Avenue and Ocean Terrace. We're putting in decorative concrete lighting fixtures that match the ones that you have on the promenade. So, by us doing all these different public improvements, one of the things that we asked for initially, and we're here to perfect, is that we do need to make some lot-line adjustments at the end of Seaview and Ocean. There's one of the ordinances for like 224 square feet of vacation in this area, and then over in this area here is about 896 square feet of right-of-way vacation, and we're even giving back some, a little bit, about 53 square feet. So when we redesign the geometry, now we want to make the lot lines conform with that new roadway geometry, and that's why we're here to ask for permission to do this.
That's in a nutshell. It's one of the more simple ones we've had before you.
So really, nothing's changed as far as people have access, they can still go around in circles?
Correct. And this concept that we're presenting now is the same concept that we presented when we were here the first time as well, in front of some different, a different audience, but it was, basically, we're staying consistent what was envisioned in the redevelopment upgrade.
Looks good.
It'll be great, it really is. I mean, that whole area's sort of unfinished now, and, you know, this project's going to actually finish that entire block, which is nice.
So the extra square footage that you get, that's going to be part of the new lots?
It will be, it will be part of one of the lot at the end, that's correct, it'll be part of that.
The new lots and the other one in the corner.
Correct. And part of that lot too, we're actually doing a whole planted buffer to give a little bit of buffer from the promenade to the building, so part of that area too is being used for vegetative buffer as well, for screening purposes. purposes.
And all landscaping designs have been reviewed by and approved by the planning board also as part of the subdivision approval we secured.
Could you, if you're in my sense, we have some new members here, could you just give us a little information to them on the...
Definitely.
On what the project is about and what you're doing there?
So, you know, I shouldn't bring my whole outline. So what's happening is, is right now, this consists of about three or four different lots. And what we're going to be doing is subdividing that into 12 lots for single-family homes. I think the minimum lot size is like 4,000 to 5,000 square foot minimum lot size. And also, when we did this project, our initial designs actually had 14 lots, because that was allowed by density and zoning, we could have did more lots. But when we worked with Chris Rice, a local architect that really knows the beachfront home type of styles, he actually convinced a client to drop the density down to 12 lots, so he could actually make varying shaped homes and design zones, and actually give the streetscapes looking better, as well as give a little more variety to the product. So it's not a cookie-cutter-type design.
We locked in a series of different architectural elements and designs, so that no matter who came in to build the homes, they must build them in conformance with those architectural designs that came up, and were part of the subdivision approval that was granted by the planning board.
Yeah, I wish I had the elevations, really, because they really were great. Because when you see these buildings lined up, you think they might all look the same and some of that. That's not the case at all. The architect did such a great job of actually varying the sides through many meetings that we had, through the city officials and everything as well, so. So that's it. So basically, there's some single-family homes that were built out there now. This is sort of going to be a continuation of that, except we feel a higher-quality product that will be there compared to what you see out there today.
So what you have there is just the vacant lots. Are you going to sell the lots in the future to anybody who wants to build?
Correct.
Or are you going to have one builder building all the homes?
We've been approached by some builders who are interested in building one, two, three, four, and my client's still in discussions with those people, but they understand very clearly, they have to build not only in accordance with the approved subdivision, but in accordance with the approved architecture. Those design elements and features are all locked in. If they want to change them, they'd have to go back to the planning board and get the planning board to agree to change it. That's how important we thought having that distinct style of seashore architecture was to the success of the project.
And also, the goal is too, what we're planning on doing is actually doing all the street improvements and all the utility connections off the streets, complete the streets first. Because with these kinds of homes, they might not all be built at the same time, so we know that the city's going to want all the streets done, not waiting for someone to buy a home. So the streets will actually go in as soon as we actually get all the approvals in place. We're also, you know, getting CAFRA approval from the state of New Jersey. So once that's done, that's going to allow all the infrastructure to be done around, and then this will just be a grassed area waiting for each home to be constructed.
And that was also, I believe, a condition in the subdivision approval that we agreed to, is that all that infrastructure work is all front-loaded. So there's no gap later on that someone else comes in and says, where's my sewer connection? Well, all of that will be there, ready and waiting for each home to be built.
Right, sidewalks will be completed.
So what's the average size of a lot, 50 by 100, 50, or?
Yeah, I think it was like 50 by 100, I think maybe 40 by 100, I think. So like 4,000, I think. But then, the ones at the end, you can see here, these ones here are pretty, pretty large, actually, the ones at the end.
Would you refresh my memory and show me where the parking is?
Yes.
It's all off-street. There are garages in each home and driveways.
I can hear you.
It's all off-street. There's garages in each homes, and there's driveways in front of each homes.
And we do, we did also too, even with the spacing between the driveways, we also have on-street parking as well, where we could fit that in as well.
And what is the requirement for all of those?
Two per unit, two spaces per building.
We met that requirement, there was no variance sought for parking.
Were there architectural features on the roadway that were part of the, part of the agreement kind of with the planning board as to the...
There were, I believe, six or seven different types of prototype architectural designs that are all part of the administrative record that was approved by the planning board.
And that's for the homes?
That's for all the homes, correct.
And what about, what about for the roadway? My understanding, I mean, I'm just looking at the design.
Oh, also, yeah, so we actually submitted engineering designs that talks about, you know, the exact material, pavers, and there's some cobblestones, so you're right, there's a...
The street lights, the electric, everything's all in agreement.
Right, yeah, this is just...
They grow on the eastern edge.
Illustrative picture of it.
All part of the developers' work.
So what's the general timeline, which I know is dependent on a lot of variables?
It's really about, it's really about obtaining our permit. So we're waiting to be deemed complete from CAFRA. CAFRA is really our biggest permit right now. Basically, we've taken care of sewer issues with the line by Sewer Authority. We have to send back to your township engineer, the city engineer, to go through review, but we have to get the state comments, because the state is one of the more difficult agencies to get approvals from. We're hoping to get that in two or three months. And I think once that happens, then things can proceed pretty quickly. But I'd say, you know, it'd probably be at least four to five months before any kind of construction could begin.
What kind of impact will that have on the school district?
Pretty nominal. I mean, we envision these as year-round homes, but certainly, given their size, we've got porches and decks on some of the upper levels, so that they're there as a seasonal use as well as a year-round use. You may average two school-age children per home. I would say that'd probably be the statewide average these days for a three, four-bedroom, colonial-style household that's being constructed, because people are getting married later and having smaller families. It's a demographic reality, you see whether you're in Hudson County or Monmouth County.
But at the same time, though, when I drive through beachfront, the north area, though, when I go through the wintertime, there seems like there's not many people living there, too. So it seems like it's a heavily seasonal use, too, so these could be beach homes as well, predominantly as well, secondary homes potentially at this size.
It looks good. The only thing I'm a little curious about is the parking, like Mary Jane said. It's a one-car driveway?
No, two-car driveways.
Two-car wide?
That's right, we, right, two cars in the driveways, one in the garage. So they can actually park three vehicles on their property.
Because if there's one car, you know, one always ends up in the street because they want to get in and out.
No, we made sure to meet the parking requirement in the design guidelines for beachfront north, because we knew that's a critical issue, and we wanted to make sure that there'd be no variance relief needed for it. And as Eric highlighted, the driveway spacing is designed deliberately to try to preserve as much curbside parking in front of each home, in addition to the two cars in the driveway and the one in the garage.
And would that on the opposite side of the street, is that affected at all by grid?
No, we're maintaining the parking along the Seventh President's Park side, so we're maintaining that parking as well. We did also make an adjustment here to fix this geometry.
Right, yeah.
It won't be affected?
And Ocean Terrace either?
No. No, on-street parking that's already there remains.
Yeah, we cut the same roadway less, things to that age.
Any tax breaks on this project?
No, there's no pilot, there's no TIF, there's no increment financing of any sort. This is all private capital.
Any other questions? Like to take a consensus? Mary Jane?
Yes?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
And Chief Robach, you've got the handicap parking.
Good evening. One's a lot shorter and easier than both of those last ones. We have a resident that requested we put a handicap parking spot by their house on Grand Avenue. Our traffic officers go through these requests, and they vet them to make sure these people do have a proper handicapped placard. And they also look at the road to make sure that we could put it there legally, and that there's enough room and sightlines and all of that. So the next step is whether or not you want to approve it or not, and just want to let you know that this is not a spot specifically for the person that lives in that house. We can't make spots just for that person who lives there. We can make a spot, handicapped spot, but anybody who has a handicapped placard can park there. And the people are always made aware of that before we do it, so they know. So this one's for just one spot on Grand Avenue, I think in front of 50 Grand Avenue.
Does that have to have like a ramp or something to go across the street to get on?
No, we don't do that. We just paint it, we paint the curb, and we put up the signage, but we don't, we don't provide any kind of handicap access to it.
Any other questions?
I don't know, do you think this will open up a can of worms if you will, but the president's...
We've been doing this for a while. It's not, hasn't been overly used, you know, like we said, we do go through it. There are several kinds of different ways that you can get one, you know, the handicapped hangers and the handicap placards. Some of them are only for six months, and you can only get them twice, and then you can't get another one. We don't do that for them, because we're only going to have it for, you know, six months. This is for someone who is, you know, probably going to be handicapped for the rest of their life. And that's really the only time that we, that we do do them. And we make sure that it fits on the road and that kind of stuff, too. We're not overly...
That's a little bit like...
Indated. Yeah, I don't think there's that many.
But it's clear to the person who was requesting this that this is not a designated spot.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you. Consensus, Mary Jane?
Yes.
Dylan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions regarding reviewing of the regular meeting agenda?
I'm just curious, Kathy, if you know why all the liquor licenses came up at the same time?
Just happened to me, Hal, EBC, did them all at once, sent them all at once. That is unusual, though, you're right, that we got so many at one time.
It's good that you've been there before, that means it was all normal.
These are all the state approvals.
Yes.
Is that because of their new online system?
No.
Any other questions? So I need a motion to close.
Awo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. I need a motion to adopt a resolution to go into executive session for the following items litigation. First one is 91 Ocean Terrace, and the second is attorney-client denial of taxi driver license.
Awo.
Robach?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.